Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for July 14th. First up this evening, we have a commemoration of Independence Day on July 4th. This is the first meeting since that date. I'm honored to welcome two representatives from the League of Women Voters who will read the Declaration of Independence and then lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please welcome Cappy Eaton and Flo Alberghi. Cappy is currently Chair of the Action Committee for the State League, and both Cappy and Flo are past Presidents of the League of Women Voters of Lane County. Welcome.
She's going to get that mic down right to her.
You prefer the Declaration first?
Yes, please.
Thank you. The Declaration of Independence was proclaimed in the Constitutional Convention Congress on July 4th, 1776.
When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness.
Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light or transient causes, and accordingly all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than the right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them to absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world.
He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only.
He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people. He has called together legislative bodies unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records for the sole purpose of seeking, fatiguing them into compliance to his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of people. He has refused for a long time after such dissolutions to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise. The state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within.
He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, for that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance.
He has kept among us in times of peace standing army without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation, for quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by a mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states, for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world.
For imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government, and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us.
He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burned our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, dissolution, and tyranny, already begun with the circumstances of cruelty and perfidy, scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections amongst us as an endeavor to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages, whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions.
In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace friends.
We therefore, the Representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the recidere of our intentions, do, in the name and by authority of the good people of these colonies, solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are, and of right ought to be, free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as free and independent states they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all the other acts and things that independent states may of right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and thy sacred honor, signed by the fifty-sixth Representatives of the thirteen colonies.
And the led- The leaders in the pledge?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda this evening is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those issues which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes, and you are welcome to sit or to stand. We have this evening twenty-eight people signed up. First up is Gordon Levitt, followed by Deborah McGee.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Piercy. My name is Gordon Levitt. I'm 24 years old, and I'm a third-year-long conflict resolution student at the University of Oregon. I live in Ward Three. Thank you for deciding to hold a public hearing on the climate recovery ordinance next week. Passing the climate recovery ordinance is important for the long-term prosperity and resilience of our community. According to the Oregonian, the average price of gasoline in Oregon hit a six-year-high a week and a half ago. Additionally, at a recent meeting of Oregon's natural gas providers, natural gas prices were predicted to be eight to 10 percent higher for Oregonians this fall. Thus, a renewed commitment by the city to reduce reliance on fossil fuels in our community will not only be good for the climate, it will be good for the economy and will save the Eugenians money. Eugene has a tremendous opportunity to lead the way toward carbon neutrality and to produce policy that is in line with climate science. Let's seize this moment, continue Eugene's climate leadership, and show other communities what's possible. Thank you for your consideration, and I will see you at next week's public hearing.
Thank you. Deborah McGee is next, followed by Ann Halgard.
Good evening. My name is Deborah McGee. I've lived in the county for 29 years, but Eugene is my city. We are currently on a path to ensure a hellish future of intergenerational injustice for our children and our grandchildren. The science is clear, the red light is on, third strike and we're out. We must move to clean energy immediately. This is a moral issue. Our present course, our continued normal life, ensures certain catastrophe. Each year we wait to act significantly, we multiply the billions of dollars necessary to mitigate climate change. If we had started in 2005, we would have needed to reduce carbon by 3 percent a year. Starting in 2015, we must reduce emissions by 15 percent a year. Most climate scientists believe that the earth's positive feedback loops may start in the next five to 10 years. When this happens, we will not be able to influence or impact changes that are occurring. The number of climate deniers roughly equals the number of Americans who believe that Elvis is alive. Don't have to worry too much about them. But what about the 85 percent of Americans polled who feel scared about climate change, and the 61 percent of them who, quote, "feel there's nothing they can do"? Let's remember that the end of slavery started when 12 people at Oberlin College got together and said, "Slavery's wrong, and we will act." Let the city of Eugene be among the first in our nation to say that continuing to increase carbon in the atmosphere is wrong, and we will decide to act. We will pass the climate recovery ordinance.
Thank you. Next up is Ann Halgard, followed by Julia Olson.
Good evening, Councilors and Mayor Piercy. My name is Ann Halgard. I'm 23 years old, and I'm a second-year law student at the University of Oregon. I'm a resident of Ward Two. I wanted to come before you tonight to remind you of a childhood lesson that we all hear when we're little kids, and I feel that it's appropriate to be reminded of it at 23 and at all the various ages that I have in front of me. So acknowledging my youth, this summer I've been working part-time from home. And waking up and having the motivation to work at home when there's TV and there's hiking and it's beautiful outside has been very difficult for me, and so it's been really a test for me to find the motivation to do what's right even though it's not easy. Passing the climate recovery ordinance, I know you guys have a long road ahead of you, and Eugene is going to have a difficult time, and of course it's not an easy path, but it is the right path. So thank you for your support in the climate recovery ordinance, and I hope that you will adopt it. Thank you.
Julia Olson is next, followed by Megan Kemble.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julia Olson. I'm the Director of Our Children's Trust and a resident of Betty Taylor's Ward, excuse me. The climate recovery ordinance that you will hold a public hearing on next week respects the laws of nature. It also seeks to protect the unalienable rights to life, liberty, and happiness of the Declaration of Independence, recognized for all of us in 1776. I have had conversations in the past couple of months with youth organizations in Washington and Colorado, groups that have chapters across the country, and they are really excited about what may happen here. Many of them want to pass local laws in their own communities, and having the example of a climate recovery ordinance passed here in Eugene will serve as a really important model for all of them to move forward in their communities. And so I just want to say thank you for the public hearing next week, and we will see you then.
Megan Kemble is next, followed by Kat Fiedler.
My name is Megan Kemble. I live in Eugene in Ward Seven. I'm here to ask each of you to support the climate recovery ordinance. Climate change is one of the most critical issues we face as a global and local community. My understanding is that the city of Eugene has a climate and energy action plan with goals for limiting greenhouse gas emissions, but that those goals are not fully in line with what science now tells us is needed, and that although we are making progress, that we're not fully on track to meet those goals. Eugene, Oregon, of all communities, should be able to do what's needed to mitigate climate change. Let's do what's needed and make a firm commitment to limiting greenhouse gases. Please support the climate recovery ordinance.
Kat Fiedler is next, followed by Pat Thatcher.
Good evening. My name is Kat Fiedler, and I'm 24 years old. I'm an environmental law student and a resident of Ward Two. I'm here tonight to express my support for the Eugene climate ordinance, so that Eugene may do what is right for the local and global community, and in doing so, set an example for cities across the country. The Oregon that I have fallen in love with will look very different if carbon emissions go unchecked. The wet Pacific Northwest rainforest and the doughty found at local farmers' markets are poised to suffer from climate change. I grew up in Southern California where the smell of forest fires was commonplace, and the landscapes in which I hiked are still charred with black. My stomach sinks every time I smell a fire, even if it is just a fireplace, out of fear that it will be another unbridled forest fire worsened by drought. My asthma was first triggered by smoke from one of these fires, as was the case for many others. I fear that this will become the status quo for Oregon as well. In my short time in Eugene, I've become deeply proud of this community. I have never felt safer biking throughout a city, and I've enjoyed the summer harvest and local hikes. This climate ordinance can also be a great source of pride for this city, but more importantly, is an essential step towards protecting our atmosphere from catastrophic levels of carbon emissions and subsequent impacts. Thank you for your time.
Pat Thatcher is next, followed by Erin Kratzser.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Thatcher. I am here in support of the climate recovery ordinance. I came to testify for the same reason I am pursuing a career in climate advocacy. I really don't want to explain to my kids that they can't go climbing on glaciers or snorkeling in coral reefs because my generation lacked the political will to adequately limit carbon emissions. This ordinance won't solve climate change on its own, however, it's an essential step in the right direction and will inevitably have an impact on other cities throughout the country. The truth is, we're not going to solve this problem through a single piece of legislation. It is going to be solved through concurrent actions of each level of society, from individuals to cities and countries. Thank you for your time.
Erin Kratzser is next, followed by Sue Searlupi.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Piercy. My name is Erin Kratzser. I'm 22 and a resident of Ward Three, but working on climate action in Corvallis. And I'm looking to Eugene as an example. Even though I have a strong background in physics, in recent years I've realized that my skills in community action might also be valuable in the fight against increasing global temperature. As I've gotten more involved in climate action efforts, it's clear that there are other communities that are further along in this process than Corvallis is, and the progressive steps that other communities take help lead the way for communities like Corvallis to follow suit. From the bikeway created on Alder Street to creating the No Idle Zone campaign that reduces ambient benzene levels, Eugene is certainly one of these leaders. Every action that Eugene takes towards fighting climate change is an example to other cities around the state and the country. Just as Corvallis is beginning to create a climate action plan of our own, Eugene is listening to experts, concerned citizens, and youth alike, and is finding different ways to implement the Eugene Community Climate and Energy Action Plan. One of the most important of these actions is committing to an ordinance that will give the city manager the ability to assess and report on the progress the city is making, as well as suggest ways of revising the community plan to get us to the reduction goals that we seek. Every commitment that Eugene makes does not just help reduce the impact that the city has on the environment, but it helps blaze a path for other cities to create similar commitments to their communities and future generations. I'd like to thank you for supporting the Climate Recovery Act, sorry, the Climate Recovery Ordinance, and being an example for Corvallis, and encourage you to look forward to even more commitments that the city can make to continue the city's tradition of leading by example. Thank you for your time.
Sue Searlupi is next, followed by Madeline Smith.
Hello. My name is Sue Searlupi, and I live in Ward One, and am continually grateful to have George Brown as my family's council representative. I am here to share a public service announcement about Occupy Medical. This coming Sunday, July 20th, we will be offering our services in Florence, Oregon. Occupy Medical was invited to give a demonstration clinic by the Florence Chapter of the Healthcare for All Oregon Campaign. As you know, Occupy Medical has been working to serve as a positive example of what single-payer health care can be. It's part of our crusade to heal America's ailing health care system. The bus will set up shop at St. Vincent de Paul parking lot at 2315 Highway 101. We are happy to share our unique skill set and our vision with the good people of Florence. This is a new environment for us, and we can't help but wonder what we will be facing. Different communities host different clusters of diseases and conditions. A community with a largely elderly population will display more diseases like arthritis, gout, and hypertension. We are trying to equip ourselves for the conditions that we predict. One thing that we can guarantee in every community that we serve is conditions and disease caused or exacerbated by bigotry. We see injustice played out on the bodies and minds of our patients every week. We see prejudice as a disease that must also be treated. We at Occupy Medical have sworn to serve as a positive example of the world that we want to live in. Classism, sexism, homophobia, racism are all learned traits. They are all spread aggressively by continued misinformation. Prejudice can be healed by spreading factual information. We at Occupy Medical stand up for justice and the basic truth that health care is a human right. We look forward to bringing Florence this message, sorry, we look forward to bringing this message to our neighbors in Florence. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Madeline Smith is next, followed by Donald Driscoll. Madeline Smith is first.
Oh, you're first.
Yes.
Hello. I'm Madeline Smith. I live at 594 West 11th Avenue, and I'm definitely in favor of the climate recovery ordinance. We have an interesting situation. In 1776, we had states declaring independence from Great Britain. Now we have cities declaring independence from the kind of poor governance that we are getting at the federal level, so that it's only at the city level that people are close enough to each other and trust each other enough to do the work that is involved in climate recovery. Now, it's a first step in enacting the Public Trust doctrine, which Mary Wood has written about eloquently, which says we have a right to clean air now and for all future generations. And if you want to know the danger of the situation we're in, there's one degree, two degrees, three degrees, it gets very dangerous, and we have a group for 350 to hold the climate at that level. And if we go above three degrees, then it becomes a global situation that goes out of the control of all the people who at lower levels of degree could have contained the situation. So here we are, independent cities, and we have the opportunity to show other levels of government that we can do it, and we want the other levels to also, including international levels, to please come together and control our climate for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Driscoll is next, followed by Ward Beck.
Thank you, Mayor Piercy, and also members of the City Council. My name's Donald B. Driscoll. I'm an architect and a community planner. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the City Council to explain to the citizens of Eugene why we should spend $15 million for a third of the interior space that we already have in our existing city hall, and that could be rehabbed for approximately $10 million to $12 million. Now, we're doing all of this at the same time we're continuing to spend $1.2 million in leased space all over town. With three times the space in our existing city hall, as opposed to that being proposed in the new city hall, we could begin to house a lot of that leased space and save money. The other thing I would like to point out is that rehabilitation can provide a significant and and beautiful city hall. It's not a disposable building. It has great, great potential, and I think it should be recognized. And I think it's a mistake and also a tragedy in a way that we would be losing that much space and spending that much money for so little space for a city hall. Thank you very much.
Ward Beck is next, followed by Marston Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ward Beck, and I live on Spyglass Drive in Consular Clark's Ward. I am here tonight to suggest that the city put a 10-year hold on tearing down the existing city hall. I have a long history in downtown Eugene. My late father was the last manager of the J.C. Penney Store at Broadway and Willamette, the repurposed Broadway Commercial Center. I worked there throughout high school and college in the 1960s. I was the developer who sold the building on Country Club Road to the city for the repurposed police headquarters. I think there are three important reasons to delay tearing down the existing building. First, when the decision to tear down was made, there was and continues to be a widespread misinformation that the present building is an earthquake disaster waiting to happen. In the last two months, I have asked approximately 20 people about the old city hall. All of them gave me the same answer: It cannot be saved because of earthquake safety. In the course of my work on helping move the police, everyone agreed that the present city hall would not, could not economically be retrofitted for essential services earthquake standards. That is a separate issue from normal office earthquake safety. There was an estimate that I remember from Turner Construction of less than $1 million to meet current office earthquake standards. Second, Eugene has a long history of repurposing buildings, from the Oregon Electric Station, the Smead Hotel, the Downtown Athletic Club, the Obama Marche Department Store, the Old Penny Store, the new police headquarters. The list is almost endless. We should take our time and have our first choice be repurposing or reusing the existing structure. Third, I am a commercial real estate broker. There are over, there is over 100,000 square feet of empty offices in downtown Eugene, and the eWeb waterfront development is coming. Current lease rates will not support new construction. There is no need for new space. Lang County's building, where we are tonight, has good space for meetings in the city manager's office. Manager Reese could say for sure, but it seems to me that the present office locations are working fine, and the space in the city is presently leasing is helping support the present downtown structure. During my recommended 10-year delay, the city hall parking structure could be used for a converted Farmer's Saturday Market, put the food vendors across the street on the southeast corner of Eighth and Pearl, consider opening part of the existing building for temporary homeless housing. I would bet that several nonprofits could be convinced to help with several separated housing areas. Just ideas, but much better than tent cities. Again, please consider delaying the destruction of the existing city hall on a long-term basis. The new paint job would be much better and cheaper.
Next up is Marston Morgan, followed by Bill Blix.
My name is Marston Morgan. I have a architectural office here right around the corner. I'm a architect slash farmer, more farmer than architect lately, but I'm interested in preserving the city hall. I think there's a huge disparity that needs to be accounted for. I'm part of a group, a working group, but you see us back here, about six to 12, actually more than six to 12, about a dozen or more architects, engineers that have looked at this thing, done our own analysis, based on as much information as we could get. And it looks that, you know, we could rehab that building for around $6 to $12 million. I think you'll hear that number a lot. $6 million would be a bare bones, very conservative, which would, should appeal to the fiscal conservatives on the council. That's what it would take, and do some basic energy restoration also. There needs to be, I think, a technical audit to look at this, to account for that disparity. That's a huge number, I mean, just technically. Difference between as little as $6 million and more than $62 million needs to be accounted As I said, a technical audit might be the way to go with that. I think a, just one particular issue that I think that, I know some members of the council are very fond of, and that's energy conservation. And realize, you've got a building of some 70,000 square feet of roof area over there. It doesn't take, you know, a great deal of mathematics to convert that into photovoltaics. If you had a photovoltaic roof there, you would be well on your way to a, not just a zero-energy building, but a energy-plus building, even by the standards of 1964, when the building was designed and built, which I'm very familiar with because I was around in '64 to do part of that analysis. In short, it's a valuable building. You've got really about 170,000 square feet over there. About 90,000 of that is in parking, 200 and some spaces originally. I know because I inventoried it 20 years ago. I don't see how you can possibly think, I mean, this is just me, you know, why would you throw 170,000 square feet away at a cost to the public of more than $60 million? Please take a second look, at least. Please, thank you.
Bill Blix is next, followed by Eric Hall.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Percy. My name is Bill Blix. I reside at 2295 East 29th Avenue in Eugene, Oregon, and have for over 40 years. I've been a working sculptor since the late 1960s. I have large welded bronze pieces here in Oregon and Japan. In 1989, I testified before Congress in favor of the Visual Artists Rights Act, which was enacted into law in 1990. The intent of this law is to protect the moral rights of the artists, and consequently to offer protection for our heritage. In 1980, I created the Capitol Fountain, one block north of the State Capitol Building. It was a result of a national competition held to satisfy a request by former Governor Charles Sprague. In 1990, it was decided to remove this 20 by 29 by 89-foot multi-ton work to allow for a two-story, two-block underground parking structure. Initially, disposal of the fountain was considered. One state official actually stated that this work was over 10 years old, and so it had reached its useful limit. Governor Sprague's bequest, made in his will, that had been formally accepted by the state and the new Visual Artists Rights Act argued otherwise, and the fountain was subsequently replaced at its original site, along with new landscaping atop the new parking garage where it remains today. This work was made with integrity and an eye to the long term. Because of the material bronze and the construction process, it should last for hundreds of years, not just decades. This kind of long-range thinking is what is mandated by labeling something green. All buildings should be built to last for hundreds of years, especially those that might become heritage buildings. The State Capitol is not LED certified and has had some problems with earthquake damage, but can you imagine dealing with these issues by tearing it down? The existing Eugene City Hall building is a heritage building, and it should be saved. But if it is torn down, then what replaces it must be taken as our new heritage, built to the highest standards with an eye to the distant future. It should be something remarkable and iconic. It should be something that will outline the Jaquah Center for Student-Athletes. It should be something that our children's children can take pride in. This would cost much more than $15 million, short-term, but the long-term average cost, the pride generated, and the positive attention drawn are worth working for. Thank you.
Eric Hall is next, followed by Otto Petisha.
My name is Eric Hall. My business is located at 116 Highway 99, West Eugene. Thanks for a bit of your time this evening. As I'm sure you have experienced before, it's a long and winding road when it comes to decision-making within a public body. And sometimes, I'm sure, it gets to the point where you are just glad to have finally made a decision. The exact nature of the solution remains a bit of a blur. I am here to point out that I'm concerned that that is what's happening with regard to the planned destruction of the former city hall building. In spite of your own citizens' groups' recommendations to remodel the former city hall, you've approved a direction to staff to save some relics from it and to create a new city hall. I'm not here to call into question that decision, but I do think it is worth examining why the decision to build new necessitates tearing down the current building. I understand that the city hall building doesn't work as a city hall aesthetically and functionally, according to many of you, but you need to realize that the code requirements are more severe for your proposed usage than for an alternate reuse. Further, the program that staff directed, the architectural team designed around, was much more costly on a number of fronts. This means that reuse is much more cost-effective for the private sector than for your own needs. Also, you don't have to sell the building to achieve these goals. You can still own the dirt and then require your proposer to redevelop a building, the building, for a set period of time. Further, you could ask the proposers to maintain some dedicated parking for city purposes, perhaps, or accommodate some farmers' markets functions. There are many creative solutions that could be negotiated that are being ignored by the current strategy of demolition. Therefore, I strongly request that you consider tearing down the proposed city hall and instead call for issuing an RFP. Find out what kinds of proposals you might get, what those lease terms might be, and what those programmed uses for that existing building could be. None of you would tear down your own house to build a new one. You would more typically remodel it, or sell it and buy or build something new. Why should you spend the people's money any differently than you would your own? The city must find ways to be more creative than to simply destroy the equity and the embedded energy that the citizens of Eugene have invested in the current city hall building. Thank you.
Otto Petisha is next, followed by Mark Cosby.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Otto Petisha, 1820 Kona Street, Eugene, Oregon. I don't really have very much to add, other than there have been a great many questions brought up recently, and we've really received very few answers. The questions include the justification for wasting millions of community resources, the real green approach in what we do, not just say, the real or complete energy equation, the real seismic opportunities, the response to the city's floor area ratio requirements and ordinances, the large proposed on-grade parking lot as a future land banking for the next 10 to 40 years, density as defined in the Invision Eugene, and exploring the repurposing of the existing city hall building for private or public sector uses. All of these issues were dealt with in the city-funded study to rebuild the existing building. This was a study approved by council and by the Citizens Committee that was assigned to review it. The only word that we've heard of why this focus isn't occurring is because the council chamber is not on grade. You know, this was a strategy, not a design. You want the council chamber on grade, you get the council chamber on grade. And still maintain over 125 cars in a parking structure, not having to wait for Phase Two? You have actually half of Phase Two already built. You have Phase One and half of Phase Two already built. The study was focused on, can we do, what can we get for $11 million in a new building, and what can we get for $11 million in a reconstructed building? It was proven and audited by contractors that we could get 35,000 square feet finished and 50,000 square feet shelled for the future. There are many questions and no answers. These are important questions, and the public deserves the answers. It's almost as if the staff and the city council think it will go away, or maybe just put your head in the sand. These are very important matters, and I believe they should be answered, and I'm requesting that you stop the current planning and you actually focus on answering these questions and seeing where that goes, and be responsible to the public. Thank you.
Mark Cosby is next, followed by Brian Johnson.
I am Mark Cosby, and I live at 38415 Windling Road, Markola, Oregon. I work downtown. I've been a security guy for about a year now, and, kind of interesting, our ladies run off that read the thing, but there's a tough word called tyranny, and what would tyranny look like? And bothers me a lot, but being downtown and being in the parkade, I've done security in the parkade for most of the year, the place is absolutely disgusting. I don't know when the parking structure's been cleaned, and it smells like a CFP. Three weeks ago, it was a CFP. You couldn't have dumped more water on it if you'd have poured a 55-gallon drum up there on the second level, because the restroom facilities were closed. They're closed at nine o'clock. But I know the damage doesn't just occur at three o'clock in the morning in those places because I'm a security officer. I knew when they were, that they get shut down all the time to get clean. You got a few bad players, and I went out last couple days, got some signatures, almost 400 of them, I think. And one of the attitudes is, you deal with a fifth grader, you gotta be smarter than the fifth grader. What you guys have done is created a war. They are happy to oblige you in this contest. I was over at Voodoo Donuts the other night, and a guy signed the petition, and he says it smells like pee. He wrote that right there in the comments section on the petition, and he was right. A lot of money been spent to revitalize downtown, and it's turned to a sewer, and that doesn't go very good. I got to talk to a guy from Australia, got to talk to two people from Germany, got to talk to a guy from Poland in downtown Eugene the other night. I heard the meeting earlier tonight, and you referenced shuffling these people off over to the freeway for the rest areas out there, far from city, far from potential jobs, far from hope. And I really don't think that's the message you want to convey. So I found it interesting. I went online a while ago, looked up the Federal Code of Regulations, Title 29, under Labor, subsection 1910-149. And you guys couldn't, you guys couldn't get by with us if you were a public sector.
Brian Johnson is next, followed by Deborah Jeffries.
My name is Brian Johnson. I live in Ward Two. I am an epidemiologist, and I study the things that keep our community healthy. I'm also the president of the Oregon Public Health Association, which is an organization in Oregon with more than 500 members, public members who are public health professionals throughout the state of Oregon, including here in Eugene and Springfield. I'm here tonight on behalf of OPHA to offer our official support for the earned sick leave policy, which is currently under consideration by the Eugene City Council. There are many reasons to be considering this policy, and key among them is that the policy aligns well with good public health principles, and OPHA applauds the council for its leadership in advancing the public's health. For moving forward on policy which supports families, which allows people to stay home when they are sick, to care for loved ones, or to seek preventative healthcare without the fear of losing their job, a policy which also addresses inequities in our community... the fear of losing their job, a policy which also addresses inequities in our community and would give all persons an equal opportunity to live healthful lives. We know that ideally a policy such as this would be available to all Oregonians, yet we also know that good public health policy starts at the local level, and we see this time and time again. Eugene's own tobacco ordinances paved the way for smoke-free laws in Oregon. We can be thankful that we have tobacco-free work sites and can breathe have clean indoor air wherever we work. Likewise, Eugene can lead the way towards creating workplaces where all persons can have a minimum of protections and job security when faced with an illness or when caring for a sick family member. I want to thank you again for your leadership and your support of good public health principles. And as I leave tonight, I wish to submit a letter of support for the public record on behalf of OPHA. And I thank you, and please do not hesitate to contact me if I can help to inform the discussion about the health implications or equity implications of earned sick leave.
Deborah Jeffries is next, followed by Scotty Peery.
I'm requesting an estimated annual cost to the City of Eugene of the proposed sick leave ordinance, as well as the city services counselor, counselor advocates of the ordinance believe will be cut or reduced as a result of the annual funding requirement. I asked for the estimate, I have asked for the estimated cost from some counselors and staff for some time with no success, and that's why I'm here this evening, a week before the public hearing. I'd like to draw your attention, which is what I've handed to John, to the council vision goals and outcomes that are on the website, specifically Number Two, Four, and Five. Respectfully, if this is the council's vision, goals, and outcomes, your course of action on the proposed sick leave ordinance, not the sick leave ordinance per se, but your course of action, can be considered a failure in being true to your adopted goals and outcomes. Whether you support or oppose the ordinance, I trust all of you believe you have responsibility and fiduciary duty as elected officials of the community to support your own vision, goals, and outcomes of the Eugene Council. For example, under Number Two, Sustainable Development, it states an outcome of that goal is strategic job creation and decrease unemployment and support of small and local businesses. I've not read any discussion by council stating this ordinance supports small and local businesses and that it will decrease unemployment. Number Four, Effective Accountable Municipal Government. One of the outcomes, transparent and interactive communication; the other, strong partnership between government entities. The request for the city cost estimates demonstrates a lack of transparency and interactive communication, and clearly the partnership between the government entities has been blown up. The Number Five, Fair, Stable, and Adequate Financial Resources. There's nothing in the fiscal year 15 proposed budget about this ordinance expense. There has been no effort, as I stated above, for council advocates to be transparent in financial information. If you will not provide this requested information for purposes of open and transparent public discussion prior to the public hearing, the council has failed in their duties and the mayor in her leadership role. If the information is unavailable, then the public hearing and the vote should be postponed until such time the information is available.
Next up is Scotty Peery, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Scotty Perry, and I live in George Brown's Ward. Today, we received a copy of a letter written by Eric Tars, senior attorney at the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty. Mr. Tars visited Eugene at the invitation of Eugene's Human Rights Commission and has since stayed abreast of the activities in Eugene. The NLCHP is a highly-regarded national authority that operates in cooperation with other national organizations and government agencies. It is dedicated solely to using the power of the law to advocate for the legal rights of unhoused and economically vulnerable Americans. Earlier, as a result of the Occupy Eugene and Sleeps movement, and in response to the Opportunity Eugene Homeless Task Force, the Law Center praised Eugene for its improvements. However, the letter today signals a note of alarm in response to recent changes in policies and practices, as well as some newly proposed ones. We feel it is critical that you and voters understand the specifics and the seriousness with which the nation, as represented by the National Law Center, is looking on Eugene's course of action, and therefore read you these highlights. To whom it may concern, we at the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty write to urge the City of Eugene to resume its historically positive engagement with homeless persons to produce cost-effective, humane solutions to homelessness, and discontinue its recent trend towards criminalization ordinances and practices which represent a more expensive, less effective approach, potentially in violation of Eugene's constitutional, civil rights, and human rights obligations. In particular, we are concerned with the proposed modifications to Ordinance 4.872 regarding curfew and dog registration, the proposed new ordinance regarding smoking on all public property in the downtown activity zone, the heightened enforcement of criminal trespass laws, and the recent reinterpretation of state laws ORS 203.077 and .079, requiring notice and humane treatment during evictions of encampments. We ask the city to not pass these ordinances that criminalize the state of being homeless, to cease its criminalizing practices, and to take a constructive approach to public safety and issues surrounding homelessness and poverty. And this will be continued. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, followed by Steve Hyatt.
My name is Jennifer Frenzer, and I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. So the National Law Center letter continues. We commend Eugene for its recent history of positive engagement with homeless communities. Since the adoption of Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendations in 2012, the city has worked to create constructive alternatives to criminalization, including legalized camping rest stops, expansion of the car camping program, adoption and commitment to be a human rights city, and inclusion of homelessness as a priority issue for the Human Rights Commission. We have highlighted several of Eugene's policies as best practices in our recent reports and trainings. However, we are concerned about the proposed ordinance changes and recent practices which undermine the commitment in the 2012 Task Force recommendations to improve laws that criminalize homeless individuals. Eugene has recognized ordinances do have negative effects on the nearly 3,000 homeless individuals in the community and make it more difficult for them to access permanent housing and employment. To implement them now would be counterproductive and poor policy.
Steve Hyatt is next, followed by Barb Prentice.
I'm Steve Hyatt. I live in the River Road area. The letter continues. Proposed ordinances. Curfew. The proposed modification to Ordinance 4.872J would impose a curfew from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. in Keysee Square. Alternatively, we understand Eugene may also be considering making Keysee Square into park property to implement similar curfew and other restrictions. This is Eugene's only, currently Eugene's only public property that is accessible to homeless individuals after 11:00 p.m. Curfew laws may implicate due process and equal process concerns. See Gaffney versus City of Allentown, Ramos versus Town of Vernon. Curfew laws also restrict an individual's ability to participate in a range of traditionally protected forms of speech and expression, and therefore may violate the First Amendment, Hodgkins versus Peterson. An ordinance prohibiting loitering in one place more than five minutes after 11:00 p.m. was found to be unconstitutional because it interfered with a fundamental right to stand and walk in public places, and there was no plausible safety justification for the ordinance. City of Salida versus Edelstein. Eugene already has ordinances providing penalties for all the truly criminal activities that it wishes to discourage in Keysee Square. Imposing a curfew by separate ordinance or by converting Keysee Square into park property will only serve to evict and penalize those who are not, their emphasis, already violating the existing ordinances, and in particular homeless individuals who are doing nothing more than existing, again their emphasis, in public because they have no private alternative. That's the end of this section of the letter, and I have a little time to ad lib. With the skate park seems to be up and running, pretty successful. With this three-and-a-half-million-dollar jewel in the crown, we now have eight public places where kids can go and skate without helmets. We have no public places where people can go to sleep. As they say on line WTF.
Barb Prentice is next, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
My name is Barb Prentice, and I live in Greg Evans Ward, and the letter continues. Dog licensing. The proposed modification to Ordinance 4.872G would increase the fine for having an unlicensed dog and make it a jailable offense. Homeless individuals may not be able to license their pets because they do not have all the necessary documents, immunizations, or cannot afford the licensing fee. It is unlikely Eugene will direct its police officers to go door-to-door to verify the licenses of dogs whose owners have regular housing, but because homeless persons have no private space, they will be disparately cited for violations. Pets provide comfort and companionship to their owners. For many people, their dogs are family. Dogs are also a necessity for both the physical and emotional safety of those who sleep without the protection of walls and a locked door and windows. Homeless individuals should not be deprived of the necessary protection and companionship that their dogs provide. If the city truly has public safety concerns, it could make licenses and immunizations available to homeless persons and their pets free of charge. Smoking ban. Eugene already prohibits smoking in public buildings and limits it to designated areas of restaurants and bars or employee-smoking entrances of publicly-owned buildings. The modification proposed by Councilmember Evans to ban smoking in the downtown activity zone would only implicate individuals without private dwellings, public employment, or the money to purchase alcohol or food in downtown Eugene. While we are not proponents of public smoking, the simple act of engaging in this otherwise legal behavior should not serve as a pretext for the criminalization of homeless persons.
Tracy Jocelyn is next, followed by Art Bowman.
My name is Tracy Jocelyn. I live in Eugene. The letter continues. Policy modifications. Humane eviction of campsites, ORS 203.077 and .079, require cities to develop policies that, quote, "ensure the most humane treatment for removal of homeless individuals from camping sites on public property, and provide 24 hours' notice to individuals being evicted." Eugene previously followed these requirements, but has recently decided to no longer provide notice when the land is posted as no camping, and to immediately confiscate the property of homeless individuals. Seizure of the property of homeless individuals, which includes, quote, "the very necessities of life, shelter, medicine, clothing, identification documents, and personal effects of unique and sentimental value," without notice implicates the Fourth Amendment right to be free from illegal search and seizure, Kincaid versus City of Fresno. Eugene must return to its previous policies that follow the humane spirit the state law dictates. Moreover, the city should affirmatively make other public spaces available for temporary camping that are adequate in terms of safety, access to jobs and transport, sanitation, and community resources, and should not criminalize the act of being present in public places at night until it can provide adequate housing for all its homeless residents.
Art Bowman is next, followed by Lee DeBeau.
The letter continues. Criminal trespass. The city has recently escalated enforcement of its criminal trespass ordinance and used city workers to encourage businesses to sign agreements enabling police to charge homeless individuals with trespass on business property. Arresting homeless people for being on the only space available to them may effectively be excluding homeless persons from remaining in or traveling through Eugene, impinging on the fundamental right to travel, see State versus Burnett. Broadly banning access to public areas creates a severe restriction on the right to travel that requires strict scrutiny, Johnson versus the City of Cincinnati. If such an exclusion results, and homeless persons cannot remain in their city of residence, their fundamental right to travel is being given less recognition than the same right of non-homeless persons, and an equal protection violation may have occurred. Policy considerations. For all these reasons, the approach of criminalizing acts of living by unsheltered homeless individuals has been criticized by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, the U.S. Department of Justice, U.N. experts, and the Opportunity Eugene Task Force as a civil and human rights violation. Earlier this year, the U.N. Human Rights Committee condemned criminalization of homelessness as cruel, inhuman, and degrading, and called on communities to cease their practice and to implement more constructive alternatives. Human Rights Committee concluding observations on the Fourth Report of the United States of America. Implementing these constructive alternatives to criminalization not only avoids potential litigation, I said potential litigation, but actually works towards solving the problem of homelessness. Philadelphia reduced the number of unsheltered homeless persons in the downtown area from 800 to 200 by working with local advocates to create a police protocol that promotes outreach and referrals to housing and services, mandating no arrest if no shelter space is available, and increasing resources for services, shelter, and housing. Likewise, Portland created a public bathroom maintained by a local nonprofit that stays open 24 hours a day, leading to a decrease in public urination and defecation with no increase in crime around the new bathrooms. And this was written before the recent deal of the closure of the rest towns rooms downtown at night became public knowledge. Thank you.
Lee DeBeau is next, followed by Drix.
So I'm Lee DeBeau, and I live in Ward Seven. The letter concludes. The imposition of severe penalties for relatively minor offenses only exacerbates the difficulties faced by homeless individuals, places unnecessary burdens on the criminal justice system, and violates homeless individuals' civil and human rights. Individuals cited or arrested will develop criminal records, making it more difficult for them to access needed employment, housing, and benefits. Efforts to move homeless people out of downtown areas also disrupt existing relationships with service providers, making it more difficult for homeless persons to get the assistance they need. Moreover, cost studies in 13 geographic areas demonstrate that the average cost of housing a homeless individual in jail is $87 per night, considerably more than the $31 and $28 average cost of housing a homeless individual in supportive housing and in emergency shelter, respectively. The Law Center emphatically agrees that tents are not adequate housing, and alternatives to performing necessary life activities in public spaces should be found. However, until those adequate alternatives are provided, criminalization only puts more barriers between homeless persons and housing, and far from being cost-effective, will actually cost the city more than providing housing. Eugene can and should Eugene can and should return to the constructive approaches to the problems of poverty and homelessness that it previously utilized, reject the proposed curfew, dog licensing, and smoking ordinances, and rescind the escalated no-notice, inhumane enforcement approach of the anti-camping and criminal trespass ordinances. If we at the Law Center can be of any assistance in this process, please do not hesitate to contact us. Sincerely, Eric S. Tars, Senior Attorney.
Drix is next, followed by Jean Stacey.
Hi Eugene, it's Drix and I'm sure glad to be back here. I'm sorry I wasn't here before, but I don't remember where I was, so that's all behind us. I may be going to look at my notes because it doesn't matter, I usually forget what I'm saying anyway. I live in the U District, I live on High Street, and I love it there. I'm surrounded by students all in their twenties and thirties, and a lot of people wonder, why do you live there? Well, I don't think I could live anywhere else. Every 90 seconds, somebody goes in front of my house, and I talk to them. I talk to all the people. I talk to, no, I'm getting off topic, aren't I? I'm doing that again. Well, basically, here's my concept that I would like to present to you and to our community is that the future's not going to look at all like the past or the present. Everything we know is wrong, as the fireside theorist once said, and it's proving more and more true. So there's no way we can make the future look like the past. So let's make it look better, like something we've never done before. And I'm kind of an advocate for whatever it is that I do, but I do it everywhere. Why don't we, as a community, communicate better before the crisis gets here? Before we're worried about our land issues and our money issues and our water issues, et cetera, let's just kind of cozy up and be tighter. I've come in here for a bunch of years with concepts and ideas of how we can do that on a budget of zero. Remember coming up with the Eugene accent would be kind of cool? Or secret handshake, or just any of these things that are on a budget of nothing. Well, I'm used to spending nothing, and there's plenty of it. So one of the concepts that I've come to, because, well, I had a heart attack and I realized I shouldn't be stressful. So you look at a situation and you try to rethink it. Hang on. All right, I've got a minute. So I just don't want to run out. We are, well, with our Declaration of Independence that we read today, there's a lot that hasn't changed. It's still going to be us, but the more I look at it, the more I study it, I realize that's really true. It really is us, but it's all of us. It's every single one of us. I grew up in the same country, we all did, realizing, well, we're all just alike. Yes, just like everybody else. Well, I came to a higher conclusion. I realized that we are all the same person. We're the same person. I'm you, and I'm here just talking away because it doesn't bother me and I love my community. Architects, think of arking, and the rest of us. But because we're a community of so many connected minds, let's mine them. Let's pull out ideas from kids, from seniors, even people that are disabled with strokes. They have great ideas, and together, we're a great community already, we just need to kind of float with it. So I'm going to keep inventing new words and new concepts, and I'll try to come earlier in the meeting next time. Thanks for all you do, everybody.
Jean Stacey is next.
I'm Jean Stacey from Eugene. Tonight, we request the council to order an investigation into the April 4 shutdown of the Whoville Health Sanctuary. The $50,000 inexplicably premature, secretly planned, and totally unnecessary shutdown of Whoville Sanctuary, executed without timely notice to residents or advocates as promised, and without a safe place for its physically disabled and mentally ill residents to go, signaled a dramatic change in Eugene's moral direction and created a huge breach in public trust. Councilmember Sorette stipulated directly to the city manager, quote, "I am very glad to hear the city manager state very clearly the intention to find a new location and to invite folks at Whoville to relocate there. I think that speaks to the intent of the motion I proposed and that this council passed," close quote. Councilors Zelenka, Brown, and Pryor were all on the record emphasizing to the city manager that the sanctuary should not be shut down until there was another site. Not a single counselor ever even suggested publicly that the sanctuary might be shut down prior to the availability of an alternate site, and certainly not prior to the deadline. The audacious shutdown of the Whoville Sanctuary has clearly drawn national attention, and not only from the National Law Center. It has also served as a local proclamation announcing that it is once again open season on hunting down the homeless. Policies are being reinterpreted, new ordinances written, and EPD is once again violating its own policies and evicting the homeless. This council legislated a specific ordinance to provide a site for physically disabled and mentally ill from Whoville. We demand an investigation into the city shutdown of Whoville Sanctuary and failure to provide that legislated site. This investigation is needed in order to identify and eliminate the cancer that has invaded our public policy and practices regarding homeless citizens, a cancer responsible not only for the shutdown, but for the proliferation of dishonorable acts at all levels of government since the shutdown occurred. On a different subject, we want to invite you all to Keyzee Square, 10 o'clock for street theater this Friday. The title is "Without Public Bathrooms: Eugene's Alitrine," and we hope you'll be there.
I'm going to close the public forum and ask if there are any comments from council? Councilor Sorette, and then Councilor Brown.
So thanks again, everyone who came to speak. It's always important to hear from folks. I just had a couple of follow-up questions for the city manager about a couple of things that were raised. Can you remind us what the status is of those proposals around downtown, the dog licensing and the, oh, I'm blanking out on the other details. I, Art. And what?
On the Keyzee Square.
Thank you, yes, Broadway Plaza.
Neither one of those ordinances are currently on your agenda for action, and the work session that the council approved the poll for for downtown smoking is on your October 29 work section agenda.
So the other items are not on our agenda to be considered in the future? Right now, they're, they're kind of?
They're currently not on your agenda, that's correct.
We're not going forward with them?
What, the council has not said they're not going forward with them. We haven't come back and scheduled those back onto your agenda yet.
So they will come back before us?
They could come back before you, they won't be before your break, however.
Right, okay. And did we, apologize again for the memory refresher, did we move forward on a proposal to look at creating a park at Broadway Plaza?
What the council asked us to do is also take a look at that and what it would take to create a park on Broadway Plaza. So you have asked us to do that, yes.
All right, thank you. So we still have those discussions yet before us later. And then on the question of the sick days, earned sick time proposal, will we, will the council be receiving an estimate of what that will, may potentially cost the city, both the administrative piece and if we're applying the ordinance to ourselves prior to us taking action on the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. All I too would like to thank everyone for coming down, and I'd also especially like to thank the seven people who read the whole email from Eric Tars from the National Law Center on Homelessness. I agree with every single one of those points. Everything that he mentioned is, I believe, totally insupportable and pushes us way far. It does not move the bar forward in dealing with unhoused people. It sets everything back, and I think it's a terrible way to go. We were headed down a good path, and I feel that we've been slightly derailed, and we need to get back on that path. And I had the good fortune to meet Mr. Tars when he was here three and a half years ago. He spoke with people in human services, and he's really a very bright guy and very knowledgeable, and he knows what works all around the country. He's in contact with homeless advocates in various governments at different levels, cities and counties and states, and he knows what doesn't work, and he knows what's illegal, too. And he's basically, homelessness is illegal to be homeless in many places, and I hate to see us head in that direction, especially once we started on such a good path. So thank you guys for reading that. I read it when he sent it to us, but thanks for the refresher, appreciate that.
So I just wanted to give you this information that I got from one of our staff, Jeff Perry. Short-term plan for restrooms. Install five standard ADA portable restrooms throughout downtown and near parking garages. Work with local service providers to customize portable restrooms that complement downtown Eugene with artwork, graphic design, or landscaping, promote positive behavior, and are safer to the public. Close existing park garage restrooms once portables are in place. Continue to actively monitor restrooms and incidents downtown. A long-term plan is evaluate effectiveness of the portable restrooms after six-month pilot project ends. Determine if issues decrease and what locations are most effective. Consider more permanent solutions based on portable restroom data. So there is activity around making sure that restrooms are available all times of the day. Just wanted to share that with you. Okay, we're going to move now to the consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, passes, thank you. We're now going into item number four, which is the work session on an ordinance concerning single-family code amendments for accessory buildings. The manager?
Hi, Alyssa.
Good evening, Alyssa Hanson with the Planning Division. I just want to give you a quick recap of where we are, very quick recap. So your public hearing was on June 16, and that was on a revised ordinance. At that public hearing, there were 12 speakers, four who spoke in support of the revised ordinance and eight who were in opposition. The record was left open for one week at the request of one of the speakers to address concerns related to the allowance of secondary dwellings on larger flag lots. The testimony was provided to you via email last week. It's also available via the project website, and that includes the testimony submitted prior to the hearing, at the hearing, and then during that one week period. A little bit more on the topic of the allowance of secondary dwellings on larger flag lots. So just to be clear, our current land use code allows secondary dwellings on flag lots that are allowed, that are 13,000 square feet or larger. The revised ordinance that you held a public hearing on would prohibit secondary dwellings on larger flag lots, and then in either case, they're not allowed on flag lots less than 13,5,000 square feet. So as part of the testimony, proposed concepts to allow secondary dwellings on larger flag lots were submitted. Those are included in your packet as Attachment B. There's a lot of detail, so I'm not going to walk you through those, only to say that they would allow for secondary dwellings on larger flag lots. I'm not sure how many times I can say that tonight. And there are a number of standards that they would be subject to. Probably the, what's most different from our existing code would be the landscaping and the driveway standards. I just want to highlight two issues for you that staff has identified and communicated to the drafter of these concepts. So as I mentioned, currently, there are a number of lots within the city that are eligible, a number of flag lots within the city that are eligible for secondary dwelling. So there are about 300 flag lots that could today have a secondary dwelling on them based on our code. As a result of the proposed concepts, only about 50% of those would be eligible. So just to be clear, although the proposed concepts do allow secondary dwelling units on some larger flag lots, it would not, they wouldn't allow them on all larger flag lots. And it really has to do with the, a lot of details, with the width of the flag pole. As you probably recall, flag lots are shaped like a flag, they have a flag pole and a flag area. So it's really, the limiting factor here would be the width of the flag pole. And then second, the proposed driveway paving conflicts, the proposed, those, the driveway paving widths that have been proposed conflict with fire code requirements for access, they're actually narrower than what our fire code requires for passage. So I will say that if we're directed to incorporate these flag lot standards into the revised code, we'll work with interested parties on a solution to this issue regarding the conflicts with the fire code. Today, we're really just looking for a direction from you on any specific changes you might have to the revised ordinance, and we will bring you back the ordinance for final action that's scheduled for July 28.
Opening it up for questions, Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The idea of the, I read over Attachment B a couple times, and there's a couple things I still don't quite understand, but I, my understanding is that the gist of these suggestions is, and as you said, there's, there's 300 lots that are existing flag lots now that are developable. I believe that the idea of these suggestions is to, not to really change anything for the existing lots, like they would be grandfathered, to use the term.
That is true for flag lots that have a flag pole width of a certain size. So as long as they have a flag pole width of a certain size, or there's a bundle of flag lots that share that size of a flag pole, you're correct. They would be able, there is some sort of grandfathering in there that would allow them, you know, not to have to make any changes.
What is the, what is the width of the driveway required by the fire department?
They, for, so it's in our current code, and it's actually when there's two or more flag lots, they require, well, that's actually more than just for flag lots, but it's a minimum width of 20 feet.
Okay.
And that is actually our current driveway width in the code. When there's two to four flag lots, we require 20 feet of paving. There are some allowances in the event there's a, you know, a nice tree there, they could narrow.
Right.
A little bit.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilor Pryor.
Just a, just a quick question, so that, just so I understand the context, that right now with the revision that's been proposed in Attachment B of these 300 lots, that would allow for development on about 150 of them?
150 to 180, yeah.
Roughly speaking.
Yeah.
So we haven't completely resolved the issue of the 300 lots. There's still about 150 lots that would not be developable.
Correct.
Just to refresh my memory, the original staff proposal way back when, how did that accommodate these 300 flag lots?
They would have been allowed to do a secondary dwelling subject to the new, you know, setback height and slope setbacks.
Okay, so the original proposal from staff would have allowed for development on these 300 flag lots?
Correct.
And then the first set of revisions knocked all 300 of them out?
Correct.
Since, the B has added 150 back in but still leaves 150 out.
Correct.
And then the emergency access issue, how was the emergency access issue accommodated within the original staff proposal?
We didn't make, so that, we're calling that the planning commission recommendation or the staff recommendation. That didn't change the existing driveway standards. So we have, the Eugene code has existing driveway standards for flag lots that meet fire code.
Okay.
And those were not proposed to be changed as part of that, the first ordinance that you have, you have held a public hearing on.
So then if we were, for whatever reason, to go back and take a second look at the original staff recommendations around flag lots, we could cover all 300 lots and provide for emergency access to all 300 lots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sorette.
Yeah, thank you. I'm fine with having staff go back and figure out how to incorporate this, these suggestions for the flag lots and make them comport with our other requirements for fire code. I'm curious if you have a similar analysis on how the neighborhood leaders?
So, the planning commission recommendation included new code language that it would allow for alley access lots within certain locations. The ordinance before you now does not allow for the creation of new alley access lots.
So, there would be no new alley access lots created under the proposed revisions that we have right now?
Right, just the ordinance that the --
Gotcha.
The draft ordinance that we're looking at. Correct.
And how many were reestimated would have been allowed?
You know, it was a fairly modest number. It was approximately 40.
Okay, thank you.
Over 20 years.
Over a course of 20 years?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Poling?
Of the 150 remaining flag lots, have we made any attempt to ensure that the property owners have been notified of them not being able to build on those flag lots?
So, all of the -- all 300 of them were sent notice. Property owners of all of the flag lots over 13,500 square feet were sent notice prior to your public hearing that there was a proposed land regulation change going on and that it was possible that they would lose their allowance for a secondary dwelling.
And was that notification done by mail?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the other thing, since we've had a couple of changes since we started this, before we take action on this, I would like a side-by-side comparison on staff recommendation and the final proposed alternative recommendation, so you can kind of -- don't have to flip back and forth through stacks of paper.
Did that.
Just, well, there's been some new changes made. So, I just would like an updated one where I can look at it and go side-by-side in comparison on those.
Okay, so, you want this updated with flag lots, is what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to have to use bigger paper.
And then, the other changes that may have -- may have or will be made.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes. I guess.
Hang on just a second. I'm not -- we're trying to decide. So, when we come back on July 28th?
28.
Do we know what we're bringing back?
Revised matrix and --
I think it'd be helpful if we had clear direction that said whether or not we should be incorporating the concepts in Attachment B into the new -- into the --
Say that again, please.
It would be helpful if we had clear direction whether or not to incorporate the concepts that are included in Attachment B for flag lots into the revised ordinance.
Counselor Clark?
This is staff table number two. Can I just weigh in on that?
Yep.
When we've been talking with the drafter of the ordinance, and what I've basically said is, if we just get general head nods from council that you want us to continue incorporating these in, we will do that. And we've done the initial research and analysis, so we didn't feel like we needed to make a big deal out of it and have a motion that said, "You all go do this, 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 and this." If everyone sort of felt like, "Yeah, if that's what we want to do, we want to include these and bring back 150 of these units," we'll do that work. We just wanted to make sure everybody was good with that.
Counselor Clark?
Mr. Manager, is a motion helpful in this regard?
I'll ask you. Do you want a motion or?
Well, I think, I mean, there's going to be some elements that come up through this process that are going to require some flexibility. So, one of the issues with a motion, if you give us a motion that directs us to implement all of the things that are in that sheet, we've already had some discussions with Paul that suggest we may want to adjust some things that he's okay with. And so, we want to be able to have that flexibility. So, what, if you want to come up with a motion that directs us, I don't think we need it to be that specific. It could just -- as long as you don't say --
I understood what you -- I appreciate that. I understood what you were saying, Sarah. And it was very clear to me to come back to us on the same track we've been on with the adjustments that were made by input with the Neighborhood Association. And now, with these adjustments to flag lots and maybe one or two tiny little tweaks in the process that are consistent with the conversation we've had with the Neighborhood Association, and you're asking us, "Is that what you want us to bring back in ordinance", right?
Correct.
I would -- I don't know that a motion is necessary. I'd be happy just to say, "Yeah, that's what I was hoping that you would do."
Counselor Brown?
Well, I was going to say, yeah, I'm fine with head nods. I was, in fact, I was going to say in my second round, I would just suggest that you bring, you know, move the whole thing forward, bringing forward all of the, or as many as possible for adjustment later, all of the, you know, suggestions in Attachment B. And so, my head nod is yes, if we end up doing it that way.
Counselor Pryor?
Maybe this clarification might provide some -- something that you're looking for. It sounds like when we're doing the side-by-side comparison, we're comparing the original staff recommendations with a revision. And there's kind of like a couple of revisions now that we have. I'm -- what I think I'm hearing is, the revision in the side-by-side comparison is the most current, including the B element revision, so that we can compare what was originally proposed with where we stand now on the revisions.
Getting a -- something.
Is that not what -- is that not what you were saying?
Mine was -- I thought we had clear direction to staff already with five votes on council about what the ordinance should say with regard to SDUs and alley access, but that there was this piece of fixing the flag lot issue. That's all I want to see come back.
Well, that's, I think, what we're talking about, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. That's what I --
I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. So, is that enough direction? Do you feel that you could -- does that work?
Is there anybody that doesn't want to do that?
Got it? Everybody okay with that? Okay.
I think that's good. I think I also want to just suggest we'll bring back the matrix and comparison chart. One thing that will be important is that we take -- hopefully, that you can take action on this on July 28th, because in the big scheme of things, the efficiencies that you're generating out of these single-family code amendments is a pretty small piece of the envisioned Eugene pie, but it's holding up the whole envisioned Eugene pie. So, it'd be good to at least take action, and we can always come back at some later date and fix whatever's unfixed.
We'll get it adjusted. All right, thank you. So, we're going to go on now to the next item on our agenda. Thank you very much. And that is just a brief run-through, anything that you need to say on committee reports and items of interest. And let's see, the only thing that I think I need to tell you is, might be interested, I took -- actually, city manager and I took a tour of the behavioral health facility being built at the university campus for peace health. It's a larger and modern facility that's really going to improve local services and working conditions. So, it's a real big leap forward, I think, for the community in terms of mental health. Also, want to -- the Lane Act met and recognize that two top regional transportation projects were moved forward in the Connect Oregon process and are likely to, very likely to, be funded. That's the West 11th Bike and Ped Bridge Connections and the Franklin Boulevard Phase One Transit Station. Those are two of our regional projects. And our bike share was ranked 38th because the entire group sort of took a -- was questioning all the bike projects. And so, I'm going to go to ODC on Thursday and make a pitch that it get in the next -- if there's any extra change, that we go in that direction, so that -- wanted to let you know that. Yes?
I would just give you a quick update at ElCog. As you remember, we were talking about whether or not LTD would be admitted to ElCog as a voting member. And there was some concern about the fact that that was not an elected body, but an appointed one. ElCog's charter specifically stated that only elected representatives could be there. And so, they were looking to see if the charter for ElCog could be adapted to fit more with the state's requirement, which wasn't that you had to be elected, but you had to be a recognized government body. So, ElCog was proposing a amendment to its charter and also a change to its bylaws, and then, a vote to see whether or not the membership was willing to allow for LTD to become a member. The first two votes, because they were charter and bylaw amendments, required a two-thirds majority of ElCog to support them, and they were not able to muster the two-thirds vote. So, it never really got to a determination of whether or not LTD could join, because they were not able to reach the threshold for approving the charter and bylaw changes. So, everything kind of just stays the way it is. And I just thought you would want to know what that progress was.
Thank you. Just go down this row. Counselor Zalinka?
Yeah, just to add to what the mayor was talking about with MPC, and this is the actual list of all the projects that were funded in Connect Oregon Five, we're in Connect Oregon Five. There was $42 million in the whole state, of which our region got about $12 million of it. And you see the breakdown in front. And I asterix the projects the mayor was talking about. The second highest-ranked one is the Lane Transit District one, and about the seventh one was the other Lane Transit one. And then, the first one is -- on the next page was the -- our bike share one. If the first page is the ones that are fully funded, if those don't get fully funded or there's money left over, they go down the pecking order. So, the first one to be funded after that would be the bike share program. And then, the City of Crestwell's Airport one was down ways a bit. Those are the top ones from our area that were to be funded. The other thing to be aware of, because this is going to come back to council, is the scenario -- central lane scenario planning work that's going on. You recall Senate Bill 1059 required that Metro in Portland developed scenario planning and Eugene area developed scenario planning. Metro has to adopt one. We have to pick one, but we don't have to implement it. So, that work is what's going on here. They're in the phase where they've developed the three different scenarios, which is the base case, the one that maximizes existing policies to generate the greatest amount of benefits, to lower greenhouse gases and create livability and save people money. And then, the third scenario, C, represent the highest level. So, there's a workshop on July 24th, 5:00 to 7:30 at Springfield Justice Center on these scenarios. This will be coming back to council, because all three jurisdictions, like you can't -- or I guess MPC has to decide, so the council will have to decide which of the scenarios we want to see move forward for approval. And probably not until at least the fall, maybe after that.
Thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
Your man.
Counselor Poling?
Thank you. You have two things. One, real quick, Traveling County is kind of hosting or sponsoring or helping put on an event that's called the Eugene Ale Trail. And it highlights some of our local breweries. And there's a total of 10 of them. And you can go onto Traveling County's website. There's a way to get a passport. And as you visit each one of the 10 breweries, you get your passport stamped. And if you complete nine of them, which are down here in the valley, you get a T-shirt, I believe. If you go to the one in Oak Ridge, you actually get a Stein. Now, there is a very strong disclaimer about trying to do all 10 of them in one day. This goes on all for quite a while, so you don't have to do it all at one time. You can spread it out. And they also encourage a designated driver. But that's a pretty good event going on. And then, the second thing, Friday, the mayor and I and the city manager, I believe there's some other city staff there, attended a meeting over in Springfield. It was in reference to the Big Look, the process we're going through with the metro area economic development. And the first part of the meeting, Dave Hauser from the Chamber of Commerce did a quick presentation on basically what has transpired up to this point as far as taking another look at the old Lane-Metro partnership and some of the possibilities or things that we're looking at in the future. I asked him for some of the notes that -- for his notes that he did on the presentation, and evidently, we didn't communicate well together. I didn't get them. So, Mr. City Manager, I think it would be a good idea if we had -- if we have time to have a presentation, maybe by John Lively, on what Dave Hauser presented, as well as what Allison Larson from Tadso presented. And she's an economic development expert, and she's out of Spokane, I believe it is. And she came down and spent a considerable amount of time here in Lane County, going through the different communities and talking to different types of industry and business clusters and everything else. And kind of gave us a rating, a grade, so to speak, on each individual areas of her concerns. And me trying to express what she covered in a two-hour meeting just won't make it. But I think John Lively could probably get that to us in five words or less. I know the mayor sent out an email covering that meeting. Did a pretty good job of hitting all the topics, but I think maybe a little bit more of a presentation might be helpful also.
I'll follow up with Dave Hauser, and we'll get a sense of who might be the best person to make the presentation, but I'll follow up on that.
Good, because I actually -- I think that would be really good. Gets everybody up to the same speed on all -- it's very interesting in terms of the opportunities and the challenges and all of that kind of stuff. Okay, I'm going to start down there with Greg.
Humans' Rights Commission, we're going to be meeting next week, so I don't have anything for you now. And then, we've got a retreat planned for the next couple of weeks, a few weeks in the future. So, I have something back when we come back after our break.
Thank you, Counsel Evans. Counsel Brown?
Okay, Counsel Evans? Okay. All right.
Yeah, the Sustainability Commission's on here. Sustainability Commission's going to have a retreat also on August 26th. We're actually meeting this Wednesday, and we'll start that process and then finish it off in the evening of August 26th. So, when we come back, we'll have -- and that's to develop the work plan for the Sustainability Commission. So, you're appointees, if you have input into that. I want to talk to them.
City manager, you have anything you want to add?
Your man.
All right, thank you, everybody.